will be Bevan Yao. Bevan Yao and on deck will be Brandy Pult. So both of those will come up at this time. Bevan, you come on to the stand and Brandy, if you'll come and get in the on-deck seat. Okay, so if you're here, work your way to the front and find that seat. Okay, the clock will start when you start speaking. I'm going to ask that you introduce yourself and give your address, please. Okay? All right?
Is this on public access?
You don't have to do it.
Do not give my address.
Augusta County.
Augusta County. You've got to be a resident.
My name is Bevan Yao and I am a resident of Augusta County. I have two daughters in high school. And this current law appears to be designed to attack, divide, create confusion, exacerbate mental health concerns, and it promotes animosity between cis and transgender peers, between the school and families, and with children and their parents. I'm here tonight to partner with you, the school board, and the task that you have before you. I know this is a complicated mess and it takes all of us to get through this. And we're not alone. We have a community here. We have parents, grandparents, coaches, youth pastors. Everyone here is to support this process to make sure that this is safe for all students. I'm asking three things publicly. First, I request that you submit in writing clear definitions and examples of some key terms outlined in this policy. What is transgender identity abuse, neglect, and being at risk of transgender identity abuse and neglect? What does it mean that parents must be accepting of their child's gender identity? Are there actions attached to that acceptance? And if so, what are they? I'm asking for reasons because this policy threatens CPS if parents don't comply with ambiguous terminology. So please be specific. If you are defining abuse and neglects, to define things as puberty blockers, hormone therapies, double mastectomies, et cetera, please be specific in your definition. Second, a written detailed plan on how Augusta County will provide a safe restroom and locker room for all children. Are you updating the bathrooms, the locker rooms, to provide private toilet facilities and changing areas? Are you providing monitors? What are you doing to plan for this process? And thirdly, I'm asking that you build trust by contacting parents and teachers and coaches in this community before you escalate things to CPS and attorneys. We're here to support our children. We all want them to feel safe and secure. And finally, I want you to be mindful of the unintended consequences that this has. You're going to hear a lot tonight from children who are what we would call typical or normal. Are you thinking about our autism populations who fixate on sexual identity and genitalia? Are you thinking about those who've been sexually traumatized and might be triggered? What are you going to do? Are you going to provide mental health resources in our school to address these triggers and these issues? What are you going to do? And I would challenge you to be a leader in Augusta County, Virginia. We're a great state. We're a great community. We love and support all of our children. We're a very protective community. And I ask that you reach out to us, make referrals, community services board, and treatment resources before escalating things to CPS and county attorneys. Thank you.
Thank you. On deck, we will have Danielle Schell Walter. Danielle, if you will please move to the front. Okay. Introduce yourself.
I'm Renee Holtz and I am from Fort Defiance District. Thank you, board members, and supervisor Dr. Bond. As a parent, it is your job to teach your children about gender and sense of who they are. Biological traits, developmental influences, and environmental conditions play a factor in who they are. By age two, a child can tell the physical difference between boys and girls. The environment your child is in plays a big role and they are in school 50% of their time. Society expects everyone to conform to this change. To learn from other, to learn from another child in the bathroom and/or locker room about sexual orientation is absurd. And it is a parent's job to teach that. Our brain doesn't even fully develop until 25 years of age. As a parent, I do not think it is fair to put a child or adolescent in this situation to make adult decisions when they are mentally not capable of that. You take the risk of sexual harassment and assault. You also have children who have suffered some sort of sexual trauma. Agreeing to shared bathrooms will be reoffending these children, which causes more harm than good. For the National Association of School Psychologists, school is supposed to be a safe place, a safe environment for kids. If the school board agrees to this, then they are agreeing to sacrifice our children's safety and this is not okay. You can find balance to protect every child by making private bathrooms for youth who struggle with their gender. It is not just about gender identity. It is simply about what is humanely right in protecting all youth. I understand your fears. You probably fear that not having a policy would jeopardize receiving state and federal money. And it may, however, you must not let fear persuade you. Instead, let the unknown guide you. Yes, the unknown. The unknown damage is being done to our students daily because we follow worldly trends and not empirical evidence. So I ask that you consider your children and your grandchildren. You'd want them to be safe at all times, right? You would want them to enjoy youth, right? You don't want to activate or reactivate trauma within students. This is not healthy and surely not something that you want for your own family. Make the right decision for your youth and not for a political appeasement. Lastly, I want you to collectively put on your creative caps and protect our students now, tomorrow, and for generations to come. Thank you.
On deck is Bethany Hopeless. Bethany Hopeless, if you will please move to the forefront, please.
Hi, I'm Danielle Schell Walter. I'm an Augusta County resident and I'm a mom of three children. I'm here to be a voice to say against allowing transgender to use the same bathroom as my children. Here are a few reasons why I think we should consider other ways to allow transgender to be who they are but keep our children safe. There's just a big risk that our children could become victims in a situation of crime. One of the reasons, what happens when a fifth, fourth, third, or grader goes to a lower-grade bathroom and uses that bathroom and our child is in that bathroom, either using it or walking in? Secondly, what happens when a child decides they're going to use Snapchat or social media and snap a picture to one of their friends while our child is using the bathroom or going into the bathroom? Third, what happens when you have a transgender visitor that comes to the school and wants to use our children's bathroom? Are you going to allow them to use that bathroom? Fourth, how are you going to help children who come from traumatized, abusive backgrounds of multiple levels and could be further traumatized by potential things that occur? I'm not here to label transgender as an evil person or a bad person at all. But who knows when someone that isn't transgender would use it as a cover to harm our children? Even if it happens one time, that's one time too many. I've experienced sexual abuse at a young age and I know it takes years to get over. Some of the effects, fear, anxiety, and trust. Do we want our children to go through that? If not, we need to consider other options. Some things we never get over when something like that happens. It's time we take a sand and vote this crap out.
On deck will be Harold Munson. Harold Munson, if you will please move to the front.
Hello, my name is Bethany. I'm an Augusta County resident. I have a daughter enrolled in the Augusta County Public School System and a son who will follow behind her. Like others here, I saw social media posts circulating about upcoming policy changes regarding the care of transgender students. I understood that the claims being made were intentionally misleading. However, as I read through the concerns of our local parents, there was one issue that kept coming up. Some people are concerned that these policies are going to make girls' restrooms unsafe and increase the risk of sexual violence for their children at school. That is why I am here today. I am a researcher with a master's degree in communication and advocacy who has considerable knowledge on the topic of sexual violence. I share the following information with you today to encourage all of us to continue educating ourselves about how these policies will impact the safety of all our students. Sexual violence is a problem everywhere. Every year, thousands of minors in Virginia are victims of sexual violence. And of all age groups, adolescents comprise the largest known proportion of victims. In order to find solutions to this pervasive issue, we need to have a good understanding of the problem. Here's some information we have about sexual violence against young children and adolescents. More than 90% of sexually abused children know they're abusers. They are not strangers. Looking at factors surrounding sexual victimization of adolescent girls, researchers found the situation in which adolescent girls experience sexual violence were, from smallest to largest, when hanging out with a friend, by an authority figure, at a social gathering, and finally, the largest proportion of sexual assaults occurred when the adolescent girls were with their boyfriend or date. Based on what we know about when, where, and how sexual violence is likely to occur, I can say that I am confident that my daughter will be at no greater risk of sexual victimization at school with the implementation of trans-affirming policies. Given more time, I would be happy to explain further. But again, there is no evidence to support the claim that allowing students to use the bathroom aligning with their identity will increase the risk of sexual violence in schools. However, hey, it's my time. However, there is a group of students at risk if these policies are not implemented. It is transgender students. And the risks I am talking about are harassment, discrimination, and suicide. Transgender adolescents are more likely to attempt suicide than other youth. And one easy and effective way to reduce the risk of suicide is by affirming their identity, which is what these policies do.
Mr. Munson and on deck is Renee Craig. Please allow Mr. Munson the mic, please. Folks, the adults.
My name is Harold Munson. I'm a church member. You've got a lot of good explanations. They helped me understand already a lot of things I didn't know when I came here tonight. I appreciate that. But this policy we talked about is one I understand, I think, pretty clearly, that if we allow any student, for example, born a male who declares himself a female and wants to use any facility in the school that females use, he will have that right and nobody will have any option to deny that. So anatomical boys can freely undress and shower in the presence of girls who are doing those same things. The policy would require teachers to call boys by female terms if they so insist. It is amazing to see that we're even talking about this. In the name of acceptance and tolerance, we're asked to trample on the rights of the vast majority of our students. It would find us distressing. Majority of our students are going to be highly offended, even frightened, possibly threatened. Imagine the trauma of a girl who was physically assaulted by a self-declared transgender. We can see massive lawsuits coming from that direction. The state is demanding that we cross some boundaries that should not be crossed. Now, I was privileged to serve on a local school board in another state for eight years. I was even privileged to be the chairman for a while. So I can imagine some of the things that are going through your minds right now. We had controversial things, but nothing has experienced, nothing has life-changing. I've been through some difficult circumstances on the school board, including being threatened by a disrover. But that doesn't excuse doing to the right. We need to make that distinction. So as a board, our goal was always to do what was morally right and best for the entire student body, teachers, and staff. Here in Virginia, our immediate family includes members who are teachers, coaches, cafeteria workers in Augusta County. With this background, I think I can say that I would implore you not to sacrifice the safety and integrity of our schools and the children and teachers within the school as we try and accommodate a tiny fraction of the student body.
Renee Craig and on deck, Leslie Brady. If you will move to the front, please. Leslie Brady.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Renee Locklear-Craig and my husband and I grew up in Augusta County. We still live here on Hermitage Road and we now raise our children here as well. And I'm also a teacher. Let me start by saying thank you for the hard work that you do trying to help our children. I know that a lot is placed on you as you make mundane and crucial decisions based on input from the superintendent, families, teachers, students, as well as the general public. So thank you. My encouragement tonight is for you to not enter into this cultural debate. Going along with these guidelines that have been set before you will then set the precedent of placing all future moral decisions from the culture upon yourselves. Entering upon this slippery slope will have you making a Pandora's Box worth of moral judgments for everyone still in Augusta County from here on out. And that's a lot of pressure. Instead, I'm asking you to simply represent the majority of those you serve as you were elected to do. The Oxford Dictionary. The Oxford Dictionary defines representative as "A person chosen or elected to speak or act on behalf of a wider group." I mean no disrespect here. I'm simply saying that part of your job when elected is to represent and serve your community. And just for reference, I found a 2017 study from ACLU, I'm sorry, from UCLA that said that 0.7% of teens identify as transgender and 0.6% of adults. I do realize that either way, there will be people unhappy. I empathize with the burden that is placed upon you all at times and now. How you manage that burden, though, is to simply do two things. Number one, stand with the majority whom you serve. And number two, aim for the greater good. I'll give you one metaphor that while humor is to hopefully illustrate my point of standing with the majority. As we can all see, I'm very pregnant. And as I look around the room, I'll make the blanket statement that not many people here are pregnant. I'm the 1%. Now, if I told you that none of my clothes were comfortable, which is true. So until I'm not pregnant anymore and I'm feeling more comfortable in my clothes again, I'm not wearing any of me or any of you. That'll make me feel more comfortable. Now, if I said that, you all would probably think, well, you know, I'm sorry that you're not comfortable, but none of us feel like that and not wearing any clothes would affect all of us. It's funny, but the meaning applies. The 1% never dictates the 99%. Secondly, as I said, aim for the greater good. In short, having a biological male use a male bathroom in and of itself poses no safety risks. However, allowing a biological male to use a female bathroom at his discretion offers the potential for numerous risks. Aim for the greater good. One of your jobs, of course, as you know, is to help keep our children safe. And as a teacher, I can tell you that if I take 22 third graders on a bathroom break, I'm not in there. I literally cannot see what the children are doing near and to each other, never mind hormonal teens in an unsupervised locker room. It's not fair to make your teachers, who are already so overwhelmed with the gender police. They need your support now more than ever. Let me just close by saying this. Every teaching class I ever took talked about setting the students up for success. Going along with the trend of letting children decide their gender is not setting them up for success. My students can't even make an informed choice in the lunch line. They're children. Just go along with this travesty and place such a wide and deep burden on their shoulders. Please let them be kids because we all know they have the rest of their lives to make painstaking, consequential, burdensome decisions. Thank you so much.
My name is Leslie Brady and I have been an Augusta County resident for nearly four decades. Two decades ago, I graduated from Fort Defiance. I was a proud graduate and was a proud lifelong resident of Augusta County. I have family members who have been in the educational realm, both Rockingham and Augusta County. Couple months ago, I stopped here fighting for my children to get back into school and I'm here again, unfortunately, fighting for the safety of my children and those, their peers for today's situation. I know the gender, I know the gender identity situation is coming from current politicians. However, my biggest issue is that we need your support to support our children, the vast majority, to keep this current school safe, paving for them. I don't want my rising fifth-grade daughter to walk into a bathroom with a boy, and I say this, a boy with a penis, not knowing what could happen to her. The same goes for my son, a rising human learner. I don't want him walking into a bathroom with a female with a vagina, using the bathroom in two whole different manners. It's scary and especially for our girls going through that pre-vestment period where they're coming to terms with their changing body. They don't need to come into a bathroom with the opposite gender in there, looking at them, peering at them, watching them. We need to create a safe pavement. For those who have gendered or identity issues, we need a completely separate bathroom for them or make a complete bathroom overhaul and do like many facilities now and it's a one-room locked entrance where only one person can go in and one person can go out. I implore you, representing us as Augusta County residents, to stand up with us, parents, to bind with us, to walk this path together. Enough is enough with cancel culture. We need to look out for the safety of our students for the future of Augusta County. We need to stop being complacent in today's world and we need to look for the future of our children and create a safe environment. Fight for Augusta County. Fight for your residents.
And Kenneth Dameron on deck. Kenneth Dameron.
While I served in the Army, I learned Army Corps values. These two values that I'm about to speak also pertain to the board and our leaders of our community. I also want to say that any type of discrimination is wrong in every which way possible. Integrity, the sixth of the Army values. Do what's right legally and morally. Integrity is a quality you develop by adhering to moral principles. It requires that you do and say nothing that deceives others. As your integrity grows, so does the trust others place in you. The more choices you make based on integrity, the more this highly prized value will affect your relationship with family, friends, and finally, the fundamental acceptance of yourself. Personal courage, the seventh of the Army values. Face fear, danger, and adversity, physical or moral. Personal courage has long been associated with my Army. With physical courage, it is a matter of enduring physical duress and at times risking personal safety. Facing moral fear, adversity may be a long, slow process of continuing forward on the right path, especially if taking those actions is not popular by others. You can build this personal courage by daily standing up for and acting upon the things that you know are honorable. The job of we, the people, is to challenge the government when they practice tyranny and try to pass it off as equality. Not to fold, lay down, and give up. Stop lying to yourself and to our kids. This is a slippery slope and it won't stop at a boy using a girl's bathroom or vice versa. Next year, it could be something else and so on. So if you want to be true patriots and leaders, find your moral compass and have some personal courage and stand up against the Virginia Department of Education and for what is right. I also want to take a minute to recognize everyone in this room, the adults, young men and women alike. They're here to speak these truths and recognize the beliefs of our county. They are criticizing what's being pushed onto the American people of this community. Dr. Martin Luther King once said, "The time is always right to do what is right." These people are taking time out of their day to speak out against a state and agenda that wants to put forth ideas that are not compliant with our county's beliefs. Benjamin Franklin once said, "It is the first responsibility of every citizen to question authority." And that's why I'm here and this is why I'm saying this. And I commend all these parents and young adults for doing what the founding fathers had preached from the inception of our country. Thomas Paine also wrote, "The duty of a patriot is to protect his country from its government." And that's the problem we're having today. Lastly, I have two kids, a boy that's eight, a girl that's 10. I will take complete and utter offense and disrespect if a child that has a penis is in the girl's bathroom or locker room with my daughter and vice versa. And I also ask the board to be leaders and not followers.
And on deck is Josh Hamilton, please. Josh Hamilton.
I'm Kenny Gaverman, also an Augusta County resident. And I'm here today in opposition to this transgendered policy. I'm here to represent my two grandchildren, three and five, because they can't represent themselves. I'm standing up here for their avenues and for their benefit, for their protection. And I'm asking you to do the same for those grandchildren. Conservatives and Christians believe that we are trying to instill in our children do not align with this policy. More than I believe that they align with the policy the vast majority of the conservatives and Christians in the valley. As the speaker noted, we're coming upon our celebration of Independence Day where good men did the right thing. So I'll leave with this quote. "The only thing necessary for the triumph of evil is for good men to do nothing." I'm asking you folks to do something for our children and for their future. Thank you.
Mr. Hamilton and on deck is Nick Astor.
My name is Josh Hamilton. My three minutes is not going to be as well rehearsed as everybody else's, but it's my three minutes. I'm just a God-loving, God-fearing gun-toed and comfortable with and fishy-filthy. I went and served in two wars, the United States-Priest Wars, to defend the freedoms that we have here. To defend the freedoms that we have here. And I am appalled that I have to come back home to fight. You got this, buddy. For my six-year-old daughter who can't, she doesn't understand it. I think it's, I think it's stupid that we even here. There are two genders. There is a male and a female. God created those two genders. I challenge everybody in this room to look at that wall right there. In God we trust. And if we trust in God, let's let God back in our schools.
Amen.
And like the other lady said, I'm here speaking for my six-year-old daughter And like the other lady said, I'm here speaking for my six-year-old daughter who can't decide what she wants for dinner. How can she make a decision on her gender? God made that decision for her, and no boy belongs in a bathroom with my daughter.
Mr. Astor, and on deck is Derek Sage.
My name is Nick Astor. I'm from Swope. I'm a parent running for school board, pastor of district. I have no doubt that the teachers and staff of Augusta County School System make every effort to accommodate the students and parents that have special needs and requests. I am sure that this is handled on a case-by-case basis, as it should be. I applaud your long history of attention to the individual needs of students and parents. So why don't we stick with that? Why don't we stick with the individual needs of the individuals and parents? Let's make our own policies. You know, I think the people tonight would like to, at the end, would like to hear how each individual Board member feels about the transgender policy. I think the people would like to know if they're in opposition as a group to this policy, and if they're expressing that to Richmond.
Amen.
Hey, Dr. Martin. I've read the policy, and I see a lot of, "School systems shall do this and shall do that," and I know what that means. But again, I'm wondering what our options are here, as the attorney laid out. If it's not tied to funding, and if it's not tied to scrutiny or legalities, let's make our own policies. Let's put Augusta County first. Let's be the first spoke in the wheel that says, "We're not doing this." We need the Board to stand up for our own policy. The Augusta County policy that treats all students kindly and meets their individual needs. We can do that. We can do that. We can write a better policy than what's been forced on us from Richmond. Show Richmond we've had enough. The parents, teachers, and yes, the school board of Augusta County knows what's best for our kids. The pencil pushers and let's-have-a-meeting people in Richmond do not. We know what's best for our children. Let's make our own policies. We know what we're doing. And as I'm running for school board, I wanted to thank Dr. Opatree for your professional and kind discussions we had prior to the meeting. Politics can be simple. So let's do this, let's do it tonight, let's do the right thing for our kids.
Mr. Sage and Dr. Volpe, if you're on deck. Mr. Sage?
Let me take off my proposal, for sure. All right, Mr. Young, I've got a question for you. You said that we could be losing federal funding if we don't abide by these rules, correct? That's what you were saying? I need clarification on something.
That's not exactly what I said. What I said is this. I said that if the school division does not adopt a policy that recognizes nondiscrimination of transgender students, that the U.S. Department of Education's Office of Civil Rights has made it clear that they will interpret Title IX in a manner to require public schools to recognize the rights of transgender students and to not engage in discrimination against those students. Ultimately, the U.S. Department of Education has the authority, in cases of noncompliance of the local school board, to withhold funding. It's a long process, it takes some...
I understand that. I just want to get to the, to the crux of what you had. I want to know, okay, we're risking losing some money, we can just sell some more cookie dough to make that up. And also, you said that the fourth district court could actually have an injunction, I'm sorry, have somebody else come on this board, or have removal of people on this board and make their own decisions, right?
What I said, that's not exactly what I said, but...
I told you I'm simple, I need some explanation.
That's okay. I recognize there's a lot of law being done.
And can I have my time that he's...
I'm not speaking, so if you're asking me a question, I'll try to answer the question as best I can. An injunction proceeding could be brought by a student, he was a transgender student who was adversely affected by the lack of the policy, and will attempt to enjoin the Board to pass a policy in compliance with the state law and also in compliance with federal law.
I got you, yeah. But there could be an injunction where they make their own, where they come and forcefully make that policy, is what you said before.
No, I didn't say that.
So we have a choice. I mean, this board is not neutered like I thought a moment ago. I thought that they were, if they said no, and something happened, that Richmond could come here and say, "No, no, no, we're going to do this anyway."
Any board can say no, but if they say no, there are consequences, because that no, under these circumstances, is notwithstanding all the arguments that are being made, and I understand that. If they say no, if the Board decides not to adopt these policies, it will unquestionably, without any debate whatsoever, be in violation of Virginia law.
I understand that. So I want to know...
So we either read or follow Virginia law, or we don't.
Don't. I think, I think the majority of us is in agreement, but I want to know, can each one of you, you know, make your actual choice instead of thinking, "Will I be removed, or will this be forced upon us?" I, I, I want to know who to be mad at when, when this goes through. I want to know if you guys, and I don't know if I'm responsible for selling my daughters out to Richmond. And what is this you get?
Mr. Sage, two times, uh, sorry.
Thank you.
Uh, Dr. Volpe?
Before I started speaking for just a minute, if you guys would just go like this, would you like what I say? If you don't worry, that way I can get it out. I appreciate the, the opportunity to be here. I'm representing four of my grandchildren. I have 10 who are Augusta County residents tonight. All four of them are girls. Three of them are in school, one will be in school. And I would like to say, first of all, as one of the gentlemen that fought for our country said, "Right behind you, it says, 'In God we trust.'" I get that this attorney who represents many of, as he said, school boards around the area, is going to enlighten you to the place of fear. Now, I get it, that's his job. He needs to put all the fear in you that you need to be able to say, "Oh, my gosh, we're going to get our butt suit off, and we need to be afraid." But I want to challenge you tonight to realize that a long time ago, they tried to put us as pastors in fear of lawsuits, and they, they had churches to go and get incorporated for the same reasons. And lawyers told us about that, too. Lawsuits that never really came and really jeopardized us even more. So don't worry about what could happen. What I would like to say to you about what will happen, if you adopt this law and you step into that place where you have CPS go get parents that don't identify with their kids like they should, or whatever it reads, you are stepping into a place where you're going against God's law. And I would implore you to be more afraid of, I would implore you to be more afraid of a living God than Richmond.
Amen.
I would implore you to understand that it's a point of the man who wants to die, and then the judgment. And each one of you will individually be judged, and that attorney will not be there to defend you. When you stand before God, that attorney will not be there to defend you. You can't, you can't hire him and have him standing between you and the Lord. So I want you to just realize tonight that you have, you have two options, you heard them tonight. Your option A is to go with Richmond. Your option B is to fight back against Richmond. You fight back against Richmond, and you just, just hold the line, like these parents want you to. Hold the line and don't, don't do anything for just a moment. I think a sleeping giant has been awoken. I believe Eric Bulton, I believe those that didn't vote, listen to me now, those that didn't vote, any one of you in office, and I asked the people I rode with here tonight, "Did you vote for the school board?" And they said, "No." And I said, "Well, you better start."
Amen.
All of them, if they would just go, if 5% of rural Virginia, 5 more percent of rural Virginia would go vote, we'd outvote Richmond, we'd outvote Arlington, we'd outvote Long. And so I challenge everybody in the room, listen to me, if we're going to stand with God, we're going to go with what the Bible says. One last thing, and I know I'm running out of time, want you to hear this. The Bible says this in Ephesians 6:1, "Children, obey your parents in the order, for this is right." Nowhere in here does it say, "Obey the school board, for this is right." This is the behavior of children. And if parents don't, if parents don't agree with their children identifying as something other than what God gave them, which is their gender, then, then listen to me. You call CPS, or whoever you want to call them, those parents should be the parents that stand up and say to all these parents, "We're going to trust in God. And if we have to raise our children and educate our children at home, what will we do?" You heard somebody say they're going to pull all their kids out of school, listen, you're out of the job if that happens.
And on deck is Christine Welch, Christine Welch.
Yes, Emory Eber. I live in Augusta County. And I could easily echo many of the things that have been said and will be said. So I actually kind of want to hear a couple of different things that I think should be brought out. Number one, as was pointed out at the very beginning, we're coming up on July 4th. Our country was founded by disobeying laws. Our country was founded going against those in authority. And I'm not talking about us to y'all, because our founders were in the types of position that you were in. It was the leaders of that day that stood. I would encourage you to be the same types of leaders. Because this issue, I'm a, I'm a person of faith, but I'm going to use a phrase that I can't believe I'm going to use, because I got sick of it last year. Follow the science. According to science, there is only two genders. Male and female, and those genders follow their anatomy. Take that to Richmond, because what you are having presented to you right now is purely a political issue. And I have no issue with what Mr. Young did, because he's doing his job. However, Richmond has left out something, and that is, there's also another group that will be protected, and that is the gender fluidity group, which can be a boy one day and a girl the next day. And with this, those that are the majority in this room are being perceived as being highly emotional. I would present to you that it's more emotion that is driving the other side, on how they feel on a given day, or on a certain way. What we're saying is more found in science, and in all honesty, as many have said, I'm opposed to all forms of discrimination, all forms of abuse, any of those things. I'm opposed to it with anyone. But you're also opening up a door to a lifestyle that really hurts the kids that follow. The statistics have been mentioned. If you further this, you're going to cause more kids to deal with suicide, to deal with depression. You need to protect those from themselves. Thank you.
I actually repast you, please.
I'm Christine Welch. I live in Stewart Strath. I have a daughter in middle school and a son in elementary school. I think we can all agree that all children deserve to feel safe in school. But that being said, last week I registered my children for school. I had to give permission for the Augusta County Schools to use my child's image in publications. I had to give permission for my children to use the internet. In April, a nurse called me from Stewart Strath Middle School, and I had to give permission for my daughter to have an IUD provent. I do not have to give permission for my children to change their gender. According to the Virginia thing, it says there is, and I quote, "No regulation requiring school staff to notify a parent, Henry or guardian of a student's request to affirm gender identity. If a child is not ready to tell their parents, then they should be respected." What? It's my child. They are minor, and I am their parent. If I need to give permission for y'all to let my child use the internet, I should be giving you permission to call my son a she, which I won't. Last, obviously, giving you permission to let my son into the girl's bathroom, which I won't. I will agree that there are instances where it may be hurtful for a child's parents to find out they are gender confused. I get it. Those are individual cases. Those should be handled individually. I am a licensed nurse, and I also have a background in psychology and counseling. And I know that a child becomes confused about their gender, it's part of puberty. But that is not at your discretion. Child needs help, support, exploration, sometimes therapy, but they need people to support them. They don't need teachers that can only pat them on the head and open the locker room door for them, because that's all they're allowed to do, according to this, according to what was published. They have to do this. Children who question their orientation need support. That is well-known. I think that you need to look at what is happening. Obviously, we have parents out here who care about their children, and I think all of us are desperately trying to raise our children in a society that insists on doing it for us. And now we have to fight the Virginia school system as well? We pay for the Virginia school system. Like they said, you work for us. If gender-confused students are a small percentage, then deal with that base by base. They should feel safe, obviously, but don't tell me that a child who is identifying as male goes into a male locker room, that those boys in high school are not going to say anything to that girl? I'm sorry, she is a girl. You're putting these gender-confused students at risk as well. Thank you.
Y'all can give me a minute, I've got a lot to say, okay? Good evening, Board. My name is Ashley Reed-Patch Shiflett. I am a CNA, and I'm also a pure Jesus-loving country girl. I am a waitress kid, and I am an evangelist. Yes, women can do that, too. If women can do that, they can be on the Board. Congratulations, Ms. Wells. Sir, did you say you were an attorney? Just a yes or no? No, nothing else? Yes or no?
You know I'm an attorney.
Okay, well, sir, the Bible says, "Woe to the doctors and the lawyers." So on Judgment Day, I pray that God has mercy on your soul. This is my three minutes. Board, I do come to you, and I do humbly ask you to decline this, okay? I'm concerned about where our education is going for our children. In Genesis, chapter 2, it was clearly defined, not scientifically, God-given, in the beginning was the Word. The Word was God, and the Word is God. Which, that being said, Genesis, chapter 2, theologically, any way you look at it, there was two sexes made, male and female. I have a 14-year-old daughter sitting right here, and again, if this comes out really rough, I don't mean it. I'm just really nervous, okay? I, I love my daughter, but my daughter has been through a lot. I can say everything that these other parents have said. I mean, we've battled with family, we've battled with cousins, we've battled with sexual issues. Why does she have to go to school where school should be a safe place? Why? There should be no reason for that. Why are you opening up a door, if you choose to do this? Why are you opening up a door for my daughter to get harassed? Where if my husband would go to work and go in the women's bathroom, it would instantly be harassment? Please, I'm begging you, Board. You don't need to do this. If you're worried about money, again, in God we trust. Find God. If you don't believe in God, I'm sorry. But let me tell you, I truly believe that what you're doing, if you approve this, you will have major issues. Not only sexual harassment, we're looking at being raped, we're looking at bullying. As they said, make them their own private bathroom, give them their own locker rooms, whatever you have to do. But we're seeing Marxism all over this. Be, be somebody that God called you to be. God put you in these positions. If you're in this position, then look at all these people out here. We're paying you. Speak, be their voice. See what a mother's heart. I have a son, too. The school board couldn't help him, so I homeschool him. I have one that goes to public and one homeschooled. I have my foot right on the line. Please, be considerate with what you have, and just hear her voice. And I pray that God will bless you if you choose to do the right thing. If you don't, I pray that God will have mercy on you.
Jenny Ferraro, Ms. Gordon?
Hello, my name is Lorna Gordy, and I recently came from Fort Feins High School, 2015 graduate. Also a wrestler at that school also, the only girl wrestler. So I am here today in regards for the boys being able to use bathrooms and girls being able to use the boys' bathrooms. It is up to us adults to be responsible and not let this pass, not only for the protection of our girls, but for our boys, too. Why should we subject our children to the social construct that a woman can be a man and a man can be a woman, when they are supposed to be learning about biology in the classroom? Are we to ignore the biology and put a social construct in the mind of children of a man can be a woman and a woman can be a man? Let alone the child cannot make their own mind from the one minute to the next, allowing a child to identify whatever they feel like that day, just to use whichever bathroom they please. It is unethical and dangerous concept. I, it is unethical and dangerous concept that we are putting in our children's minds today. Considering that children nowadays can choose their gender, it's already damaging to the minds of our children to doubt their reality and to doubt their biology. I have heard some parents say that I am, they are worried about bullying and suicide in our schools over the matter, and suggest that I am the bully and I for not wanting to take place, this to take place. First off, I am against bullying and any means. By the normal suicide rates in the U.S. is 4%, and the transgender community is 40%. And people suggest 36% of trans people commit suicide because people are mean to them, which is not true. It is not backed up by any science and cannot be cited, and it is a complete congester. It's not about true that bullying contributes to suicide, and a lot of these studies, and to inject suicide is a direct result in saying, "Boys are boys and girls are girls." We have to rule out first place as accidents and repercussions. And even if you're willing to sacrifice the entire society's proper definition of sex because you think there is a, in the legal term, "eggshell skull," meaning somebody has a consistent condition that makes them more susceptible to transism, then that isn't a way to run society. You cannot sacrifice truth because of some people are going to suffer because of the truth. Plus, there is no evidence whatsoever that the suicide rate will go down in trans community in any market way. If people pretend that women are men and men are women, and considering that we are just talking about the bathrooms, which is less important than gender themselves, this should not, this should not, we should not let this girls' and boys' bathroom and boys' and girls' bathroom. We trusted y'all to teach our children, y'all get paid by our tax dollars. Schools are open because of us.
Ms. Gordon, you're out of time, sorry.
Can I just finish one more second?
That's your thing.
All right. So I'm going to go ahead and just skip to the bottom down here. And considering that I couldn't show my shoulders in school because it was too sexual, that we are letting boys with their private parts out in our girls' locker rooms, make it make sense.
Hi, my name is Jenny Ferraro. I am a Wilson District mom. I was a student in Wilson District. My husband's name is Dan Ferraro. He was fired from Albemarle County Henley Middle School on May 27th for emailing his parents in his advisory room the option to opt out or their partnership in teaching critical race theory, courageous conversations, it's all sorts of different names, CRT, whatever it is. He wanted help in teaching a slide from Ibram X. Kendi that said, "America is inherently racist country." He wanted help from the parents to figure out a way to teach his students that it was okay to be sniffed à la Joe Biden when they were in different countries, or perhaps over here. It's incredible indoctrination, the levels of which I think we all understand. He was fired May 27th. I'm going to talk to the students of Augusta County. I'd like to say, "I'm sorry, your educations have been hijacked. Your schools are now on the wrong side of the DMZ." The degenerate governor of our Commonwealth, Ralph "Keep the Baby" Comfortable until we execute it, has sold your rights to a free public school education to the highest bidder, and that bidder was the Chinese Communist Party. The governor has made a personal financial gain from the communists, in turn, for mandating the teaching of this hate to Augusta County students. Many governors of this country have done the same. They've been labeled as friendly, hard-lined, or ambiguous. We ask for a full reveal if any communists have approached any of you through any of the friendship partnerships that exist in Richmond. It's right up the road. Students, the CCP wants us divided so that they may conquer America without firing a single shot. With these new policies, our governor, and with the help of any of these school board members who don't stand against this, they are exploiting students with gender identity issues. Licensed educators who promote this indoctrination fully know they are exploiting you. They are not following the science of the Diagnostic and Statistical Manual of Mental Distorders, 5th Edition, also known as the DSM-5. Instead, they exploit a transgender student's confusion for their own personal gain. Their licenses to educate and counsel students should be revoked. Responsible and caring adults would not recommend liposuction to a student battling for their lives with anorexia. Responsible and caring adults would not assign a purge room for students who suffer from bulimia.
Ms. Ferraro, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Well, just a minute. To assign this new policy of shared bathrooms to boys and girls is just their tool, a communist tool to divide. Since World War II, people have asked, "How did millions of people stand by and do nothing as millions of people were loaded onto trains bound for concentration camps, torture, and death?" Tragically, the answer is, good men and women stayed silent. I would speak this to all Augusta County students today. Look no further than this school board, sitting here silently in front of us. Your schools have become indoctrination camps. I now will speak to all of you Augusta County administrators. If any of you roll out this indoctrination with serious fidelity, you are a communist sympathizer. I will remind you that you can console a student in a civil court of law if a single assault occurs to a single Augusta County student. And if you lose your jobs for standing up, and if you lose your job, and if you lose your job, any one of you for standing up against this, then you will be in very good company with Dan Ferraro.